Are we rolling?
Josh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. You said you're all set?
Yeah.
Okay, stand by. In five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 3rd, 2025, meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. I will announce us. This is Select Board Chair Josh Levine. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dan Swirko.
Here.
Beneath Hemavathy.
Here.
Andrew Lamb.
Here.
Shelley Maynard DeWolfe.
Here.
Steph, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Peggy Sheldon.
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting, and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. And seeing none, we will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a fairly quick one tonight because we have town meeting tomorrow. I'll start off with the announcements. Fall special town meeting. Reminder, fall special town meeting will be held tomorrow, Tuesday, November 4th, at 7:00 PM in the Long Meadow High School Gymnasium. To view the warrant and additional information, please visit longmeadowma.gov/townmeeting. Community preservation applications. The Community Preservation Committee is seeking new grant applications for possible consideration at the 2026 Annual Town Meeting. Applications should be received no later than November 13th, 2025. For additional information, please visit the Community Preservation Committee page on longmeadowma.gov. Fall 2025 Leaf Program. Special Town of Long Meadow Leaf Bags are on sale at Long Meadow Big Y. The Leaf Sale on West Road is open through Sunday, December 7th, seven days a week, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Curbside collection of Special Town Leaf Bags will occur on Saturday, November 22nd, and Saturday, December 6th. Please ensure that bags are to the curb by 7:00 AM on days of collection. For additional information, please visit longmeadowma.gov/leafprogram. Town of Long Meadow Municipal Offices. Town offices will be closed on Tuesday, November 11th, 2025, in honor of Veterans Day. And next up, do any resident comments? Anybody online, Peggy?
Mr. Shane? Mr. Shane, care of me?
Oh, I'm all set. I'm just listening.
Okay. Thanks. No.
Okay, interviews and appointments. First, we have...
Do you have any confirmations this evening? So we kept it on the agenda for the possibility, but no, none this evening.
Do we have our Director of Public Health?
Yes.
Okay, so Lynn, would you like to?
Yes, thank you. Yes, so I'm very pleased tonight to present an appointment of Director of Public Health. Tonight, in front of you is Ryan Paxton. He has applied for the position, and after a robust application and interview process, Ryan was the selected candidate. So Mr. Paxton has extensive experience as a public health director. He currently serves in the role with the Town of Montague. In that role, as both Department of, I'm sorry, Director of Public Health and Health Agent, conducting inspections, providing education and code enforcement. Mr. Paxton is responsible for the Board of Health Operating Budget, Personnel and Contract Management, and all the responsibilities relating to carrying out the public health duties. In addition to working for the Town of Montague, Ryan has also contracted with the Pinear Valley Tobacco Control, Tobacco Coalition, where he serves as a tobacco compliance officer, conducting compliance checks, educational visits, and coordinates with the Massachusetts Tobacco Control Program and local boards of health. Before joining the Town of Montague, Ryan worked as a Sanitarian too for the City of Holyoke Board of Health. Ryan serves as both, serves on both the Valley Health Regional Collaborative Steering Committee and the Western Massachusetts Public Health Association Executive Committee. Mr. Paxton holds a Bachelor of Science in Health Science from Boston University and a Master of Public Health from the University of Massachusetts Amherst. I'm pleased to present Ryan Paxton's appointment as the next Director of Public Health to the board tonight in accordance with the Long Meadow Charter Article 5-2B. And I do have Ryan Paxton here with you tonight to answer any questions or just to make an introduction to you.
All right, thank you, Lynn. I understand it was a very, we had a great slate of candidates for this position, so I appreciate your interest. I want you to introduce yourself.
Hi, yes, so my name is Ryan Paxton, and as Lynn mentioned, you know, I've worked in local public health for the last five years or so. You know, following my graduation from first Boston University and then UMass, I started working immediately as a health agent in Hoyoke, where I, you know, I worked for the first three or so years of my career. It was a really great opportunity because they're a city that has, you know, a lot of code enforcement work, and I was also during the pandemic, so I was able to get involved in some research projects and other really interesting things that, you know, were unfortunate that they occurred during that time, but I might not have otherwise had the opportunity to do. You know, moving forward from that, I then took a progressive role as a Director for the Town of Montague, which is a one-health-agent shop with some peripheral staff. So, you know, I've been responsible for the delivery of foundational public health services in that community for the last several years. And, you know, now I'm looking to move into a role where I'd have a larger scope of work, and I think that, you know, Long Meadow represents a really good opportunity for that, especially given the eastern health district that you guys have, you know, with the other communities. And I'm really excited about trying to contribute to the work that's been put forth through the shared service arrangement. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So the Town of Montague, you've been 35 hours there.
That's correct.
What's your plan going forward here?
Well, I know that it's a 40-hour position, and I know that that's, you know, probably the baseline for the level of service that's going to be needed. I'm imagining there's probably going to need to be more work than that at times. But, you know, it's my, my plan to be as available to that role as possible.
Thank you. And are you continuing on as a tobacco compliance officer?
I need to work out some of the logistics of that. I think it's pretty likely that I'll step away from that role in the near future, just because that's, you know, contract work that takes up time outside of the regular workday. But, you know, it's something that I've done in addition to my full-time work over the course of the last five years.
Is that, I've represented clients on the other end of some of those things. I assume you're not the one going in there and checking compliance. Is that like the tobacco stings we see in town?
Oh, no, we do do those, so what we do is we work with youth officers. I have never worked in the Town of Long Meadow. I don't believe Long Meadow is a town that, actually, no, it is in our territory, yes, so it's one of the other inspectors. I apologize, I only know my territory particularly well. But we essentially perform two youth compliance checks per year, which involve, you know, taking youth compliance officers around, they attempt to purchase tobacco, you know, without holding an ID on them or anything like that. It's a very regulated process, and if, you know, vendors are found to be selling products to underage, you know, people, they're then, you know, fined by the local Board of Health, and we kind of help coordinate some of that enforcement and follow-up procedures. We also do educational visits in addition to those, which are where I'm actually physically going into the store and, you know, working with the retailers directly to make sure that they understand the regulations and the requirements. We provide them signage and, you know, really try to assist them getting to compliance as easily as possible.
Great. We haven't had any of those come before us or that we've heard about, so maybe there's been no violations, which is good. Any questions from board, beneath?
Yeah, no questions, but I just wanted to say that, you know, your resume is very impressive and very well spoken tonight, and I'm happy to see that we have such a qualified candidate, and especially within a role as important as this, to not have any disruption of service is really important. I'm glad that we were able to get this done. So thank you, Lynn, for running this process, and thank you, Ryan, for applying. Thank you.
I wish I'll take the opportunity to thank Finn McCool for his years of service. I understand he's moved on to other pastures, maybe that are greener. But he did well for us, and I hope he can continue on.
Thanks. So when I was reading your impressive resume, by the way, when I was, when I was going through it, the educational visits, so are you doing anything within the schools as well? And I just feel like there's, with the rise, the rising use of tobacco products, vaping products, we hear that a lot with the school committee.
Sure.
Is that something that, that you might bring to Long Meadow as well?
Yeah, what I can say is that, you know, in Montague, I've been pretty limited by being the only health agent, so I haven't had a lot of chance to do initiative work at all times. Sometimes, you know, we're, we're kind of busy with just doing the things that we're obligated to do in terms of the different regulations. But what I can say is that I worked in, you know, the Care Coalition as an intern many years ago, and some of the work there was focused on youth education, and really kind of honing in on some of that, you know, behavioral health data that we get, both from the state and from the federal government, and kind of using that to drive outreach in the schools. And I think that, you know, there's probably a lot of good pathways for doing that type of work here, especially given that, you know, I think you guys have a pretty robust school system, hopefully some, you know, really good relationships already in terms of like school resource officers and things like that. So, you know, I think that's totally something that a health department would reasonably, you know, have the time and capacity to put work into.
Excellent, yeah, thank you.
Any else? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming in. I look forward to working with you. Lynn, do you need a vote from us?
Yes.
All right, is there a form that needs to take?
No, you just move to confirm the appointment.
I, I will move to confirm the appointment of Ryan Paxton as the Director of Public Health.
Second.
All right, anything further? Seeing none. All those in favor? All right, unanimous. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for...
Do you guys want to stay tonight or?
Get some rest.
Thank you.
Don't set precedent. All right, we have no interviews tonight. We have some, a couple of appointments to the Historic District Commission.
I'll move to appoint Catherine Dressel and Sarah Grisleck Fernandez to three-year terms expiring June 30th, 2028, to the Historic District Commission.
Second.
Any further? Seeing none. All those in favor? Great. My agenda's running very slow. There we go. Moving on to Select Board comments, I hope Dan will correct me if I'm missing any, but we had a very successful couple of weeks for Long Meadow High School sports. The Boys Cross Country Team won the championship, so congratulations to them. And the, I did not get to go, and I'm very upset, but the Girls and Boys Soccer Team both won in penalty kick overtime on the same night, back-to-back, Republik Francis, and over Northampton, very exciting win, so congratulations to them on a great season. Good luck in the state tournaments. Dan, did I miss?
I, I was gonna say, I think the field hockey team, didn't they win Western Mass as well?
I knew I was gonna miss one. That's fantastic, so congratulations, Long Meadow High School. Love to see those kind of things.
Yes, they did.
And, yeah, they will. It's almost every annual event. And I just personally wanted to thank the Police Department for, on Halloween, we closed our Farmington and Ellington closed, and, which was very successful, and I know it was still very crowded, and there was police officers on both streets for a bit, just checking in, make sure everything went smoothly, so thank you for that presence, and for everyone in town who makes Long Meadow such a great place on Halloween. It was a fantastic night. Anybody else? Oh, I guess you really want to get out of here. All right, we have, next up, we have a Long Meadow Adult Center Community Fund One-Day Liquor License Application. I think there's two on here.
Yeah. I will move to approve the one-day liquor license applications submitted by the Long Meadow Adult Center Community Fund for November 6th, November 20th, and December 8th.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? All right, unanimous. Next up, we have a public hearing, but we are not at time yet. Where's the clock?
There isn't one. We gotta get that.
It's 7:16.
Okay, and I don't have my watch on.
7:16.
Okay. So we have next correspondence. We have a letter from, first up from Mark Gold. Do we, Lynn, are we discussing this at all tonight?
We can if you, if you want.
Well, yeah, I don't see it, I don't think it's elsewhere on the agenda. But that, Mark had a letter regarding... Mark had a letter, letter regarding Article 4 at tomorrow's town meeting. And Lynn, if you want to discuss that briefly, the status of that article.
Sure, yes, so I did respond to that letter that's on your correspondence here. That doesn't show up here tonight because the response was just made today. But essentially, do you want me to go into?
Oh, no, the status of the article.
Sure.
What's happening with that?
Sure, so, yes, as I said at the last meeting where you closed the warrant, we were still communicating between Town Council and Department of Revenue. Due to scheduling issues, that meeting did not happen until this morning. So there was about eight of us participating, and there is a pretty strong difference of opinion in interpretation of mass general law. Town Council and our energy consultant, along with myself, feel one way when we read the statute, and DOR feels a different way. And the way that DOR feels is counter to us being able to set up a revolving fund for this. So in terms of tomorrow's article, I would ask that you move to take no action, and we are formally requesting a legal opinion from DOR. Town Council's sending that letter off hopefully this week. And until we have a formal written opinion back, I would ask that there be no action taken.
And as I said, Lynn, today it's better that we find out now than, than after, so.
Question, does it change the timing of like, you know, I think you said we needed a place for the money to go to receive it?
Yeah, so the cash out of the net metering agreement that, that had been amended, those payments have been coming in since June, so those will just go in as general, general fund revenue, and that will continue that way until we tell it to do something different. In terms of the $886,000 payment from Eversource, I have not committed to them yet that we would take that check yet. But we could take it and wait and see what happens with this ruling from DOR, and decide what to do with it at the annual town meeting.
Did you not feel it was a valuable thing to get it as soon as possible from the wing?
No, I, I would like to, but whether they're holding it right now or we are, the difference is, I guess, interest on our end, but we can't spend it even when we receive it.
Do you think that it would take until May to get this, like, potentially get this opinion that would allow the creation of the revolving fund?
No, I think we'll know within a few weeks.
And I, I will say, just from what Lynn and I've discussed, there's, there's more to it than just this too. So I think if what I'm, what you're getting at is we should get this started.
Well, I, yeah, I'm sure you can imagine what I'm thinking. I'm just, is it worth? So there's so many pros and cons, and I think that none of us probably feel that this is like an earth-shattering decision. There's, you know, but if it means like not getting the funds that are due to us, getting interest on it for literally like seven months, is it worth really just waiting for this? I mean, I think that there's good reasons to do both decisions, and I'm just trying to get an idea of like what the pros and cons of just waiting.
This just happened yesterday, right?
Yeah, so I mean, we haven't had much thought about it.
So I don't have to wait for the revolving fund to tell Eversource? No.
And then we can start including interest in.
But I don't have to. I can tell Eversource to send the check in. It will come in as general fund revenue, and then you could move it at another, at, at that point, it would be fall town meeting next year into a revolving fund.
Well, I mean, it's not inconsequential to get interest, like 4% interest on $800,000 for seven months. So it, I don't know, I, I think we've all had just literally 24 hours or even less to think about this, but I think that that's, that's, that's a consideration. If, I mean, we, last meeting, we were literally all agreeing that it's, let's get the money rather than not get it, so.
And one other thing I, I want to clarify too. At that last meeting, I spoke about the ongoing cash-out payments from Nugent, the company that we have the net metering agreement with. The accounting report that I had received showed me the balance and showed me the monthly receipts without taking out the agency fees that we have to send to Nugent, that we're required to as part of our agreement. And so the, the dollar amount I gave you, that roughly $70,000 a month, that was the all-in amount. We have to pay Nugent out of that, and so that was missing from the report that had been provided to me. So 85% of that, I don't want to get too complicated here, but 50% of the net metering agreement comes to us. Out of that 50%, 85% of it goes to Nugent. So we are roughly keeping about $8,500 on average over these last five months, a month. So it's, it's not a $70,000 a month.
Can you just, for those, I'm sorry if everyone else already knows this, but just what is, why is there an 85% agency fee on our portion? Like, what are they doing for us, and does that not seem, there must be a reason, obviously?
It's their asset. It's their, they maintain the solar. It's their solar. We are the off-taker of their solar.
I think this gets a bit to what Erica was asking us at the Joint Finance Committee meeting, and something, it was probably eye-opening to all of us, why the hell are we getting $70,000 back a month? We must be paying too much, and that's the reason. There wasn't that.
Right.
This number makes much more sense.
Right.
And that's, when I said there's more to it, I, I think there's, we have to think about this all.
Well, then, this new information, I mean, I mean, you know that, like, I, I, I can see good reasons to do both ways, but the fact that it's now only like $8,500 bucks, that's going to be continuing to be in go, going into the revolving fund, to me makes us, makes me think, is it really worth having a revolving fund that has that little money going into it? Like, there's the 880, $880,000, which we'll spend, but I...
Yeah, so...
But it's per month, I guess, so it's, it's still not a huge amount of money.
Yeah, and out of all the revolving funds we have, it actually would be the most amount.
Right, but those are just for small, like, activities and...
Right, but that's the only reason you can create a revolving fund, so.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, it's not going to be so much money that it's going to be that, is, is it going to be that useful if it's that little amount of money going in there?
Well, it does, it does start at a million dollars, or...
Well, the 880 aside, of course, but that's not going to be repeated.
I agree with you, which is another reason not to take...
A revolving fund is like money in, money out, you know, equally.
Which is another reason why we not to take action tomorrow, because I, I think... But I, I do, Lynn and I talked about this afternoon, it probably makes sense to get the money now, just to get that interest, and then we can think about it later. Because it's, unless, if we don't have it, it's not doing anything for us.
That's definitely true.
And then the other piece of correspondence I wanted to touch on was the October 21st letter from the Town of Blanford Select Board. For anybody who goes around the Berkshires at all, you can see signs everywhere on the battery storage, and this is talking about commercial battery storage near the Cobble Mountain Reservoir watershed and the potential impact on Springfield water. And I thought that this was a well-done letter, and if we want to also join in on this, I think that would, could be a good thing for our board to do, and it has water and sewer commissioners. So I want to gauge everyone's interest on that for a future agenda item.
I think it's definitely worth hearing more about and learning more about that. I think that's important for us to understand what impact that could possibly have.
Okay, yeah.
I know there's a big project in Westfield too, I think, right, maybe over the past couple of years or so?
This is a really big thing that we're going to see more and more of. Long Meadow doesn't really have any land for it, but because the future of power is, if it's renewable and solar and wind, you still need somewhere to store it, so it works overnight. But whether, where, where it goes is obviously a big topic, so. Lynn, if we could add that for a future item for consideration, just echoing what this letter says, I think. We still have a few minutes, go ahead.
Really, yeah, so I believe that Anne Slick is on, and I think that she's on because she needs to interview for the Historic District Commission. Well, either way, I mean, we can either interview her, or if, or if not, okay, or if not, we should let her know so that she doesn't stay.
I told her to email.
Okay. Thank you. Why don't we go on to the...
Just one, just one, one quick question. If we, if we go back to Mark's email, I just had one question, Lynn. So Mark writes, "The concern I have and the reason for this letter is that the streetlight purchase and LED conversion was done for one reason and one reason only, to reduce the cost of that line item in the town budget and allow for the control, if not lowering, of the Long Meadow tax rate." So my question is, since, since this had occurred, it was back in 2020, LED, the transition LEDs, have, have we actually been using the funds to, for that line item in the budget? Because I went through the budget, and I don't, I, I didn't see us, nor did I hear us talk about this in, in previous budgets. Is that true? I, I didn't...
No, there has not been a reduction in the streetlight electricity account as a result. And from what I, I have looked into, it, it appears mainly because we've been purchasing the net metering credits out of that account. So there's been no change in our net metering credit amount purchase, which is why we've amassed this large credit balance. So we've been purchasing the same level of credits even though we're using less electricity.
Right, so we haven't actually been, we haven't actually been paying down this line item in the budget that...
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
And then that kind of just brought up the, the idea of having a policy in place, because, I, I mean, obviously Mark's, he's not here tonight, but he's, he's writing a letter to us about what this was supposed to be used for, which, number one, it wasn't. Number two, if we had a policy in place that we should work together on implementing, I think, moving forward. So we never had that in place, so I think it's a good opportunity for us to, to address that. Thank you.
Well, I mean, I think I'd also say, I went back and looked at the May 2019 town warrant, and there's no, no language in the article or even an explanation that says that the funds are intended to be used in a certain way. And so I think six years later, we're taking a look at this. I think there's no obligation by the town to use the funds in these way, and we should be able to choose and make a decision now on how we want to use these funds from everything that we've learned and where we sit now as a town.
Okay, still have another minute, so why don't we look at the October 6th, 2025 meetings, meeting minutes?
I will move to approve the October 6th, 2025 meeting minutes.
Second.
And I, Peggy, I forgot to email you. I, I just noticed on Select Board comments, it says there were over seventeen, 700 residents in attendance. I think it should be 700, 1,700.
1,700?
I think so. Actually, it's probably more. I don't know. I'd have to go back and watch. I'm not sure what that... I know there's a lot more at the election. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. All right, it's now 7:30, so let's go back to our public hearing for the poll petition for Verizon Job #1A7VQ3W on Williams Street. Do we have anybody? Oh, go ahead, please, come on up.
Let's get me to drive. Good evening. Don Varno with Verizon. So this poll request is, first of all, do you all have the plan? Okay. The poll request is to add a midspan poll in line between the two existing polls, 43.5 and 44. Poll, I just went up to the site. I tried to take measurements. Unfortunately, there's, there's no stake there, which is what I usually measure too. I did measure the full span, and it is almost 210 feet, it's like 209. And it was a very well-mowed area, so my guess is the stake was mowed over, which happens frequently. Poll 44 has just been replaced. It's much bigger, better, wider, stronger. And the purpose of this new poll is, I believe it was requested from Eversource. They're, they're doing some upgrades in the area, and they needed another poll because the other ones around them, even the new one, is not suitable for what they intend... the other ones around them, even the new one, um, is not suitable uh, for what they intend to put in place. So, um, they are requesting, and because Verizon, this is, uh, Long Meadow is a poll set area for Verizon. Uh, we have to be the ones to petition you folks to uh, put the poll in, at their request.
So I, I looked at the map of where this is going, uh, is there, it's trees there, are there, is any tree work required before this goes in?
It didn't look it, i- it was dark, unfortunately with daylight savings. Um, I, I couldn't get a really good, but I did walk it and there's a sidewalk um, on the side away from the street. This is coming in, it's very wide, that area. Uh, and all the poles are just on uh, the street side of the sidewalk, but there's still a good ten feet. I don't think there's going to be tree trimming necessary there, uh, and there's no trees where this poll is going, for sure.
Okay. Um, and which um, which of butters were noticed? We, we don't have those attached to ours.
Uh, everyone that you see um, on the plan. Uh-huh. Looks like seven fifteen to seven sixty-nine Williams, and then everything on the northwest side as well, Bliss Court and Grassy Gutter Road.
And that's all town property?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, as far as these go, this is uh, what, easier for me to get my head around, uh, you may, got any questions? All right, well, you, you got an easy one, I think. Um, okay, uh, I think we just need a motion or if we want to approve this petition.
Yeah, um, yeah, and I think this is just kind of a basic poll petition application, nothing fancy here, right?
No.
Yeah, um, okay. Um, I will move to approve the poll petition for Verizon job number one A seven V Q three W on Williams Street.
Second.
Anything further? All those in favor? All right, thank you for driving out, we appreciate it.
No worries, thank you folks.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving on to the October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five joint minutes with the planning board.
Um, I'll move to approve the October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five uh, meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, uh, anything further? All those in favor? And I abstain. And then the October twentieth, twenty twenty-five minutes.
I move to approve the October twentieth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes.
Second.
Anything further? All those in favor? Okay, and then, uh, last up under old business, we have the Mass Works grant design at Bliss Williams in Redfern.
Yes, so yes, thanks, uh, so you had the presentation from Fussin O'Neil a couple of meetings ago. Uh, on October twenty-ninth, the DPW uh, held a public forum with Fussin O'Neil again presenting and gathering public feedback. All in, there was about thirty attendees, um, I know that um, both Shelley and Andrew were able to make it to that. Uh, and I think a lot of the questions or comments were kind of as expected. And I don't know that there was anything new that really came about that we were not anticipating or anything that changed. Um, you know, kind of a direction that Fussin O'Neil was looking for, design um, ideas on. So we have again tonight in front of you the same options from before, and we're really just looking for kind of affirmation on which uh, design you want us to have Fussin O'Neil to continue on to get to twenty-five percent by the end of December, so that we can keep on this schedule to um, line us up to apply for the construction round of funding in the spring.
Does, uh, I thought the town was going to give us a recommendation.
Yeah, um, I talked with DPW and just with prep for town meeting and um, some of the other stuff that's going on. Uh, I didn't get a chance to get a memo together and have them co-author it with me. Uh, but I did talk with them this afternoon, and their preference is um, the option that does it all in one project. They do not want to phase it, um, they are concerned that it'll cost more and that it will less, be less advantageous for um, grant funding if we do that. Um, they, they agree with the um, design that has changes to the signalized intersection, the roundabout, and then the like mini, um, I don't even want to call it a roundabout, but you know, at the uh, Blinn Court area.
Half, half, half roundabout?
Thank you, yeah.
Just do all three, all of these.
Yeah, that is their preferred method. And there's quite a few reasons for that, um, one of them, one of the biggest ones being it's less costly to do all three together as opposed to as, in pieces. Um, and you know, really, it's a corridor and it all ties together, and once you make a change in one, it's going to have an effect in another place. And so the idea is you do it all together because that's going to give us the best result.
As awful as it'll be for getting around town at least, or getting through there, doing it all at once, that, that does make sense, I think. Because otherwise we're just extending the time, wondering what happened. And um, can you refresh us on how we anticipate funding will work for the options?
Yeah, so our goal is to apply to the Mass Works construction uh, grant application process. Uh, if we are successful there, it can be up to five million dollars in project funding, um, or a portion of that. I think if I remember right, this project was two million?
Two to four point three, I think it maxes at four point three.
Okay, so depending on what happens with that grant round, we'll, we would either get all of it or a portion of it. If it's a portion of it, we would need to have a conversation about where we come up with the other piece of funding.
And if we don't get awarded anything, are we um, how much are we on the hook for, for design?
Design was covered through Mass Works.
Oh, that's right.
Yep, uh, and if we do not get funding at all, we will then need to have a conversation about where this falls in the line of priorities with all the other road projects and what we would want to move forward with, if anything, at that point.
Go ahead.
I have a few things I can share from the, the meeting. One of the things I asked the engineers, who has gotten many towns' projects through Mass Works. I asked him, um, is there any advantage, like if, do, is there a greater chance of approval if you aim for like, less? If you like, do a project that's two million versus three million or four million? He really didn't think there was, he's just like, they're going to go by the merits of it and how much money they have available. So if we feel like this is worth doing, um, and I agree, I think option two, which does all those things, um, there's benefits to all of it, um, is worth doing, there's, there's no reason not to like, pull our punches and, and go for it. My personal opinion is that this project does enhance safety, but if we were paying for it as our town with our, like, I, I don't think that this would be that close to the highest priorities of funding that we would have, so let's, but if there, if we're going to get the Mass Works grant, then I think it's great, you know, we should definitely do it, so. I'm happy with the alternative two, as you were saying. One other question, though. Do you feel like, or have you talked to DPW about whether this would incur our, would spur us to do a lot more underground like water sewer stuff that of, of course would fall to us? Because I don't know what the age of the things under there are, so has it been done? Like, when shops were redone, like, do you have any idea?
Um, I, in terms of the water sewer age, no. I do know that there is stormwater improvements that are needed there, they're needed now regardless.
When you say no on that, you mean you, you wouldn't feel like, they don't, you don't think they, they have to be redone?
Oh, I, I don't know.
Oh, you don't know?
I don't know, um, I can follow back up with DPW on that.
I know just up the road to the left of this picture, I'm looking at alternative two on Bliss, there's a couple manhole covers that look like they are being swallowed up by the ground. Is that, what, do we know, what is that indication of?
You mean below the grade?
Yeah, oh yeah. It, it's in the middle of the street, so it's, people aren't running over it, but I assume it's nothing good.
Yeah, no, generally, no. Uh, it, it could be a couple of different things, um, but generally it's when the catch basin itself is failing.
Okay, well, I, I, I'll tell you some uh, failing catch basins.
Yeah, yeah, there's a, a long list um, of them, and they've been
Oh, the catch basin on the, in the middle? I thought the catch basins were on the side.
The, well, the sewer manhole, like the, I'm probably using the wrong terminology, but the structure of it can fail.
Oh, okay, huh. Um, yeah, so that's a great in, question, Andrew, I, I do, I'd be curious to what that'll do. I don't think that should stop us, and if there's work that needs to be done there, that is
If we can make a decision if we get approval.
Right.
Look at it and see if it's worth doing.
And this is a pretty vital area for our town, obviously, so. Yeah, I was, when I, I missed uh, the presentation from Fussin O'Neil, but I probably two years ago, I was driving uh, past Big Y, it was uh, to my north, and I saw a car walk the other way, coming down and uh, slam into somebody uh, in the next lane over, because they were, they probably had never been to town, didn't know which way to look. And uh, you just realize, oh, to us it's normal, but somebody else driving here, it, it, it's a crazy place. And uh, so I'm glad that we're taking a, a good look at it, and um, and I think that they, I've heard some feedback from people on this. And option two for those who have looked through them does seem to make the most sense.
I should add that, what, I, one of my prior concerns was traffic, like, how much it would slow the traffic. And I, I felt that they, w- we kind of pressed them on that, and, and they definitely felt that there was adequate um, flow that would accommodate even at our busiest times. So they shared like a traffic study where it was like a single lane, if we draw Bliss or Williams to a single lane, get accommodate sixteen hundred cars and at max, there's only eight hundred some cars, and they felt that that was absolutely plenty of com- of uh, capacity, in- including if the middle school, you know, is taken into account with extra people going over, so. I, I think that they acknowledged that, yeah, there will be some slowing from queuing up, you know, for the rotary and things like that, but that's kind of, of course, the point, to slow people down, and so I felt that the traffic um, question was addressed adequately.
Yeah, my, my layman's guess would be that the, the biggest backup on traffic is because of the uh, Frank Smith Redfern Williams
The left turn thing.
Yeah, and I think that that is, with that being addressed, I think it will really help. The only place I ever really notice, uh, now that, I'd switch my commute, so now I have ninety-one, which is a different thing, but um, the only time I ever really noticed backup was going down Williams. And we're hopefully going to make that much, much safer and better.
Yeah, having, having been at the, the session, it was actually very helpful, it is recorded. And so listening to it again, even though being here for the first time, I found it even more helpful. It kind of, I think they did a slightly different presentation, which had a little more information in detail, which was really helpful. I too agree that option two is, is, is what I would personally choose. I think from a safety perspective and a traffic flow, it seems to help, especially in that area. Um, and, and I think the residents who did attend had some really great questions, which pulled out even more detail around the traffic, around safety issues, um, pedestrian safety, I think that's huge uh, with the way that area is used. So I'm definitely in favor of option two, but I would also encourage people to watch the, the um, the session because I do think it has a lot of helpful information.
Go ahead.
After the presentation that night, I said that option two was the one that I was in support of, so glad to hear that, um, that, you know, that, that seems to be the consensus now. And in terms of needing to replace the water mains, when we got that presentation, it was basically like, I think our entire town was basically blinking red. Uh, needing water main replacements, so I'd be shocked if we didn't need a water main replacement, and so if that is, yeah, if that is true, uh, and you know, which is likely that the water mains do need to be replaced, I would be in favor of replacing that before doing um, this, and I think for the same reasons that we replaced the water mains and moved that project up, uh, for the L project. Because we don't want to take all the state money, we don't want to completely redo a critical part of our town and have water mains bursting underneath it and ruining all that work, so. Um, you know, if it does, if this all comes to fruition, I think, you know, I would be, I would be uh, very much in favor of of, of replacing the water mains, and if that is the case, then maybe that is something that we should be, you know, teeing up or have in the back of our minds that um, DPW should be thinking about doing a design and engineering for that, this area.
I think it all depends on the age of what's under there, right? Like, if it's, if we find out, it's like, you know, absolutely overdue to be done, absolutely, we should definitely do it for the, the roads, but I don't know if we know, like, maybe it's been replaced in like about fifteen years, you know, so that's something we can probably find out very quickly. And then if we get the approval, absolutely, we, we should plan for that, but
Yeah, I mean, I, I think when we got that presentation, in the twenty years prior to that, so
None, none of them were that new?
Two thousand three to two thousand twenty-three, we had only replaced point eight miles of water mains in, entire town, so
Sure.
all these water mains are eighty to a hundred years old.
Okay.
Um, so it would be surprising if it didn't need a replacement.
Lynn, I apologize if I, I missed this, uh, just from watching the video while doing other things, but the, the Coalvest and the Shops money that's set aside, if we get a hundred percent grant, what happens to that, the infrastructure money? That would, they pledged.
If the grant covers all of the project?
Right.
Um, uh, I don't have a solid answer for that right now, I would
It's a half a million bucks, right?
Um, so the, there's money there right now from the Shops expansion, there is no money from Coalvest.
Is that a site plan, or did I dream that we're getting that money?
They stated that at town meeting, the, the Coalvest
There's a verbal commitment, but nothing else.
Okay. And so if we got a hundred percent funding, that money could be, it's not tied to that intersection, we could apply it somewhere else?
Um, it needs to be used in that proximity.
But that could help with some of the stormwater, those
It could help with that, definitely, stormwater, water sewer.
If we need to replace that, that could
Good thinking, Shelley.
Yeah.
And the fact that we have that funding and that we have that economic development there, that makes this eligible for Mass Works, not so much the money part, but the economic development.
They, they could pull the grant back a little bit because they know we have money, if theoretically, if they find out.
Yeah, I, I hope that's a problem we have to tackle, the, the what happens if we, they fully fund us, yeah.
Hopefully they're not listening right now.
Yeah, and just, uh, actually, I was able to pull up the map, and just looking at the map, the water mains in that area were built between nineteen twenty and nineteen sixty.
Wow.
Boy, that is red, damn.
Yeah, and so it's part of the forty-three percent of our town that's, has the oldest water mains.
Oh, that was an easy guess.
Yeah. I was the only one that remembered.
Okay, uh, do we, anybody else want to discuss this?
Just one thing, um, rather than repeat, everyone agree on option two as well, but um, if, if we're ever to be excited about a, like a road project in town, I think this is really exciting. It's right in the heart where we have the businesses, um, and the new project where the old church is. So I'm excited for it, um, especially with the safety concerns that Josh mentioned too, there's, you know, it's, it's really scary at times. Um, but my question, Lynn, is uh, rather than just kind of like throwing this grant, you know, over the wall, is there something that, that we can do as a town or um, a select board or town manager to, to, to stay on the state for these, these grants to put us in a, a good position to to, to win the money? Like, I just always worry that we're, you know, we're applying and we're just kind of crossing our fingers, is there anything that we can do?
Um, for this Mass Works one, nothing comes to mind, other than obviously when we apply, we will absolutely reach out to our state rep and our state senator.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, we will also again engage Coalvest and the Shops, um, who supplied letters the last time. I will try again from Big Y, I did not receive a response the last time. I will also try with the Williams Place Mall, um, who didn't reply, respond last time either, so maybe I'll reach out if you have any contacts there to help uh, nudge that. Um, but those support letters for, from businesses in that area go a long way.
Great, thank you.
That's, no, we can definitely help with that, to help maybe nudge some of those advocacy letters.
Yeah, I can help with some of those too.
Great.
All right.
So did you need a vote from us on moving forward for December decisioning?
Yep.
All right, Shelley, you're up.
I make a motion, like I should make, so I am going to make a motion that we, uh, how would I say that, except, or move for option two, to go into the next phase of planning?
Yep.
Second.
All right, anything further on that? All those in favor? All right, great.
Thank you.
Cross our fingers.
Erica?
Yep. I'm moving on to new business quarterly investor report.
Erica?
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, hi Erica.
Hi. Okay, so I'm here tonight to submit my quarterly report on the stance of the town's cash investments for the period ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, as per the investment policy, the town held no long-term investments that exceeded the five-year limit. The individual bank balances were under the twenty million dollar provision. All banks received the highest safety rating agreed from Bear Bank. All accounts are fully insured or secured. Um, and in the first quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-five, I was able to work with some of our bank representatives to acquire some significantly higher um, rate adjustments. Most noteworthy, Peoples Bank was able to give us three point eight five on our student activity accounts, which is up point, up from point three zero. So it's a pretty big jump for us. Um, our school lunch account was also granted and increased uh, from one point two five percent up to three point Um, our school lunch account was also granted and increased, uh, from one point two five percent up to three point seven three percent. Additionally, Eastern Bank granted us an interest rate increase of four point three five percent up from two percent. We definitely expect to see some interest rate decreases with the future because of the Fed adjustments, but the Treasury, Assistant Treasurer closely monitoring interest rates and moving funds to the appropriate accounts that will optimize investments with the best return. Um, I'm also happy to report that Eastern Bank has regained its green rating from Bear Bank. Uh, with the fluctuations in status over the last few quarters, though, we're going to continue to closely monitor this relationship. And in July, I completed a bank account audit to ensure the authorization on all accounts under the town's tax ID number. In this audit, an account was discovered at TD Bank for a field hockey booster club. Um, since I wrote this letter, I actually have reached out to the representative at the bank and they worked with me and the individuals on this account to open a new account and close out the old one. So that matter is taken care of at this point. The OPAD Pension Reserve Investment Fund experienced a gain in quarterly interest. The quarter ended with a net increase of approximately four point, sorry, four hundred six thousand. And the September thirtieth balance in the fund is approximately nine point five million. Also noteworthy, during the last quarter, the town earned a total of eight hundred twenty-eight thousand, two hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty-five cents in interest. The Treasurer's Office will continue to seek the best possible interest rates and diversify funds appropriately to maximize investment potential while being compliant with Massachusetts state laws and regulations. We will also continue to closely monitor all accounts to ensure the safety and security of all investments.
Great, uh, thank you for your hard work and keeping the interest rates up and keep it on top of everything. We appreciate it. Uh, anybody else have anything for Erica? All right, done at seven fifty-three. That's pretty good.
I think it's record time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, next up we have a letter opposing, uh, Eversource gas hike. Um, and Lynn, we received this, uh, we were prompted to do this by a resident, correct?
Yes, we were. Um, and there are, um, other state legislatures, I don't, state legislators out there, uh, also penning letters and, and making more public awareness about these rate hikes and expressing their displeasure with them. So, um, I think doing this in advance of, uh, when they, well, I think November first is when it went into effect. But, um, um, doing this in advance of, uh, you know, the January, February weather, when we start to really get a lot of those outcries, cause people get bills when it's very cold and they have their heat on higher. Um, I think it makes sense and, um, yeah, we, we drafted a letter in response that, uh, you could consider adopting and then we'd send off.
And I did, I sent this to Andrew by, uh, but there was, I found an article that I, I think was written by AI. But there was some, um, eh, one rate was knocked down. The DP, DPU rejected it and it was a smallish company that, but they, um, got rejected for not meeting customer service quotas. That they, maybe it had been set by DPU before. But I was happy to see that it is possible that DPU may listen to something. Um, because this is, you know, we've seen the, the rates go up astronomically the last few years and it really with, uh, outpacing inflation and it really puts a pinch on people, uh, in a tough time of year. So if anything we can do, I think, on behalf of our residents, I think is an important step. It may not mean much just coming from us, but if it's coming from a lot of towns and it sounds like it is, I think it can be, hopefully it can be pretty powerful. So anybody else want to speak on this? Go ahead, Vith.
Thank you. Uh, I'm fully in support of this letter. And one of the things that I remember from last year especially that really put into, I guess, uh, really highlighted, uh, how massive these rate hikes were, were, was some of the studies that were done that showed that community serviced by Eversource and National Grid were paying double, uh, in energy rates last winter as what, uh, towns that had their own gas and electric were paying. So Holyoke, Westfield, South Hadley, their electric rates last, uh, or, or, you know, uh, energy rates last winter were, were less than half of, you know, uh, of Eversource and National Grid communities. And, you know, whatever we can do to, whatever voice we can give, whatever we can do to kind of get these, uh, make sure that these rate hikes aren't as high as Eversource is wanting to do them, you know, I'm, I'm fully in support of.
Yeah, agree as well. Um, this just reminds me of a conversation I had today with a friend of mine in town. Um, and we were talking about just energy efficiency as well. So just everyone should know that you can go to, uh, the government website, state government website for MassSave and, and take advantage of like a, a home assessment. And they can help you, uh, determine, you know, where you need to maybe add insulation, um, at a reduced rate. Um, not everything's covered, but certainly when, when, when I had bought my house in, in town, um, that's one of the first things we did. And you can do it multiple times, um, with the state. So highly recommend that. But it was just a thought as we were talking about, uh, you know, supporting this, this, uh, letter. So just wanted to bring that up as well.
Okay, do we have a motion to, uh, sign the letter?
I make a motion with, for the select board to sign the letter, um, as discussed.
Second.
Anything further? All those in favor? Do we have that signed tonight, Lynn?
Uh, we'll use, put your electronic, yeah.
Okay. Uh, and finally, we have a, um, a letter in support of, uh, House Bill two, four, three, two, an act to reduce incidents and death from pancre, pancreatic cancer. Uh, this was sent to us by a Massachusetts resident who, um, has gotten this, uh, this bill in front of the state legislature, uh, to increase, um, uh, everyone's probably known somebody who's had pancreatic cancer. It's one of the, it's a really terrible cancer. And, um, this bill, uh, is making its way through the legislature and, um, asked if we could throw our support behind it. And I, I think it, uh, things like this can be important to show that, uh, there's a rallying cry in the state and there's certainly people in Long Meadow who've been affected by this. So, uh, that's why I put it on the agenda. And if anybody would like to move or discuss, please do.
Um, I will move for the select board to, uh, adopt and sign the letter as attached on the agenda regarding, um, an act to reduce incidents and death from pancreatic cancer.
Second.
All right, anything further? All those in favor? Okay.
Josh, I, I do have a town manager report. It, I did not get it on the agenda. Um, but I will add it to the agenda later, but I do have one if you would like to hear it. Um, it is very short.
Come on, Lynn.
All right, go ahead.
One item is really important for, um, providing notice on because of tomorrow's meeting. But two, uh, quick ones, uh, the Parks and Rec department has launched a survey, uh, to solicit feedback from residents to help plan for the twenty twenty-six pool season. Uh, it's open to all residents, even those who did not purchase a pool pass in twenty-five. Um, it's been, we've already get, uh, gathered feedback from our pass holders. So this is open to anybody, uh, and there, it, it is linked here in my report and you can also find it on the Parks and Rec page. Um, and we've also held some recent public info sessions. Uh, we talked about one of them tonight, which was the MassWorks one. There was also a floodplain bylaw update, um, and this relates to Article Three that's on tomorrow's, uh, town meeting warrant. Uh, we did see great turnout for both of those and, um, big kudos to Leah and Dean for leading the flood, floodplain one. I know they had quite a few residents from, um, the West and Dunn Road area come and ask a lot of really tough questions and get some good answers back. And, uh, hopefully this will, will pass tomorrow night. Uh, but then the one that's a little bit more, um, time sensitive, because it relates to Article Five for tomorrow's, um, town meeting warrant, is the Mass School Building Authority did accept the center school window project into the accelerated repair program.
Wow.
Yeah, so this is huge.
Fantastic.
And tomorrow night, uh, is the vote to authorize the funding for the feasibility and design study. That's one of the first deliverables, uh, and we would, um, get that done very quickly. And keep us moving through this process. So that's great. That is great.
Thank you to everyone who worked on that. It's huge for the town.
That report was worth it.
Oh, and, uh, when Lynn was talking about Parks and Rec, I went to the website to look for the survey, which I, I could not find right, very quickly. But the little voters loungers, it is happening again tomorrow night. I didn't realize that.
Yes, it is.
Um, for anybody watching who did not know that, um, there, it looks like they're going to watch a movie. So, um, that's, that's great. Uh, I'm glad that they're doing that again. I, I appreciate that. Um, all right.
I did have one question for Lynn. Just, uh, you didn't talk about it, but I, I was just thinking, with, with everything going on with, with the federal government and, um, like SNAP benefits, that just, it's, you know, it's all over the news. And I was, I mean, it's unfortunate. It, this, this is something that hits all, you know, corners of the Commonwealth and, and even right here in Long Meadow and, you know, it's, uh, you, you just start thinking, what, what can we do in Long Meadow? Or are we doing anything to, to help, um, you know, some of these families that are, are really struggling right here, our neighbors in Long Meadow?
Uh, one of the unique things about Long Meadow specifically is that we actually have a municipal, municipal food pantry. So I would encourage anybody that needs it to, um, reach out to the adult center and get information. It's open to anybody. You don't have to be a, a senior. Um, they serve over seventy families. So that is a great, um, option for people. Uh, and then those people that do have the means, feel free to make a donation, either of non-perishable items or monetary. Uh, they can stretch what, um, would be a dollar donation very far because of some of the contacts that they have. So it's, it's a great, um, resource for us.
Lynn, is there a certain contact for that to, just to see if someone wants to make a donation, um, for non-perishable items? Like what are they in need of or, or from a monetary?
Yep, um, you could reach out to the director, Jim Layden. Um, there's also a, um, uh, we have a food pantry coordinator, very part-time one. Um, and so she can also be a great resource as well. But I would start with the director.
Okay.
I was thinking one of the good thing, one, one, something that we could do, which is probably too late now, but if, if everyone that showed up to town meeting brought a canned good with them to, you know, as they're checking in, we could, we could have, well, there might not be too many people tomorrow, but we could maybe have like four hundred canned goods. But, uh, it was just a thought I was thinking of earlier today, but it might be too late.
But maybe, I was going to give Jim a call. So, um, Dan, maybe I'll mention if, if there's a way for us to have a townwide, you know, kind of drive for that. Maybe there's a way to partner with him and, and we can help advertise it or, or communicate it.
Do that, yeah, anything we can do.
Yeah, they, um, do drive-through ones quite a bit. Um, I'm not sure, they were doing them about once a month and those had been pretty successful. Not sure if they've done one in the last two months, but, um, it definitely, we're ripe for needing to do something again.
And I saw someone actually shared a really helpful list of things. If you are going to donate items, then there's items that I had never thought of donating before, but when you think about it, you actually need all of these really vital, um, like non-perishable items. So we could probably also help with that too, if, if they are having a drive-through or great, just to help spread the word with that.
Thank you for bringing those up, those, uh, items up. All right, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moves? Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
All right, record time.